They need to meet as far as the state goes.
All right. Everybody, everybody ready? We're ready? Okay. We're gonna do the town commission workshop agenda. I will dispense with the pledge and the invocation until the regular meeting. So. Do you really need to do roll call twice?
Probably, yeah. Okay. Commissioner McMullen. Commissioner Pollan. Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Mayor Stark. Have a quorum.
I'm thinking I'm getting this off the screen, right? To kind of just kind of kick off, you know, this is a sloppy discussion about food trucks. Can you put my hand in it off to you or not?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I can go from here. So first thing I want to do is have Chief Peak introduce our new code enforcement officer. He's been on the job for a couple of months and he has been very helpful in putting together information for this discussion. So let me have Chief Peak introduce Matt real quick.
Everyone, this is Matt Roush. He comes by us by way of three and a half years of experience as the code enforcement supervisor at the city of Claremont. Prior to that, he spent nine years in the US Army with multiple tours down red range. And he's been with us since November.
I met you in December.
And I can tell you that he is doing a fantastic job for us, absolutely wonderful. And Matt, this is the commission.
Love being here so far. It's a great town and a great place that we're doing, being with Chief Peak's department. It's a great place so far.
You don't find.
You'll get over that.
You don't really, you won't find any places like this.
Oh, ma'am, this has been, this has been a great change.
Welcome, Matt.
Welcome.
Welcome on board.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, so with that, I'm going to pull up the presentation and try to go through this fairly quickly and then just kind of have an open discussion. Let me see if I can pull this up real quick. And I believe you should have this in front of you also.
Yep.
All right. So again, this is just, I've got some, some, some points here to discuss. I just kind of opened the discussion, but this is just a, really meant to be an open discussion to get some direction from the commission concerning food trucks. Very popular in town lately. We've had a couple HOAs that have been doing some things with food trucks. And we do have some food trucks that have been frequenting out on Highway 50 in the commercial area, especially down at the Chevron station. So a couple of the things that have come up as these things have been out there is that we currently do not have any municipal ordinances that cover food trucks or food truck vendors. We went through the code and looked and we have been getting some calls from people because a lot of municipalities have some pretty strict regulation on food trucks. So people tend to ask, you know, if it's all right to be here or not. So, and that's a good thing. And they are, but like I said, they are operating already at some multiple locations, both regularly and infrequently for like special events. So the objective here is really just to get some feedback from the commission and decide if you want to put some policy into place that we can then put some process to. And that would be some kind of permitting or application procedure for vendors. And I'm going to go through some state statute with you real quick because there are, we have been preempted on a certain level concerning food trucks. But they are, they are licensed and regulated through the state, the Department of Agriculture and Community Consumer Services and through FBPR, business and professional regulation. So I don't think we need to add a whole lot more on top of that. We just need to have ways that we can ensure that they're following all these, these procedures that are already out there. This is an excerpt from the state statute and I believe this is a fairly recent addition to the statutes. But it comes down to the regulation of mobile food dispensing vehicles involving licenses, registrations, permits and fees is preempted to the state. A municipal county or other local entity may not require a separate license, registration or permit under this section of the statute or require the payment of a license, registration or permit fee. Bottom line though, and I believe Nancy's there in the audience, Nancy's there and she can, she can weigh in on this also as part of this discussion. The bottom line is a municipal county or other local government may not prohibit mobile food dispensing vehicles from operating within the entirety of the entity's jurisdiction. The town commission could, through zoning, dictate where food trucks can be, say, commercial or industrial areas. And so again, we, there is some preemption here. We cannot prohibit food trucks altogether, but we can regulate where they can operate within the town.
Yeah, I'll just say that, that subparen three, although paren two is the preemption language. Three is in there that says, other than the regulations described in subsection two, which has pretty much been interpreted to be the location of where these activities can occur.
So are they saying that they've got to be DBPR compliant? Okay, and the state's going to handle all that? Okay, we can't get involved in that. We just need to make sure they are.
No, I believe the, the one thing that we can do is we can, we could require them to have a business tax receipt, a BTR, operating a business within the town. Is that correct, Nancy?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I just want to make sure that they're, you know, safe.
Right, right. And all that, the health safety and, you know, the safety component of it is really going to be handled by the state.
Okay.
So Matt, you know, is, is kind of our subject matter expert coming from Claremont because they did highly regulate this. And again, they, they've got to go through and have a state business license. They've got to have food safety permits. We could require a business tax receipt if, if the commission so chooses. And then they also making sure that they have all the proper insurance to be operating. Some things that we, we could look at, again, these are just, you know, possible solutions, possible things, just some things to think about would be, you know, do we want to talk about hours of operation? Do we want to talk about frequency? When they, you know, how often they can be here, setbacks as far as public rights away? Do they have to be on improved surfaces? Pedestrian circulation, parking access, cleanliness, outdoor storage, noise. Again, you know, how do we, we follow up if they've ever had any of their state licenses revoked? You know, finding that out so that we can ask them not to be, you know, operating within the town if they're not properly licensed. Disposal or refuse, making sure they're cleaning up after themselves based on where they're operating and when they leave, since these are mobile food trucks. So just for, for purposes of discussion. And, and there's really two things that I see would be, you know, does the commission want to limit this to certain places where they could do it? Say the Chevron, say that commercial corridor on 50 or the industrial areas like on Oakland Avenue or on Highway 50. And then secondly, do we want to have a process for special, I'll call it a special event permit where an HOA could do it as a, an infrequent, you know, event kind of a situation? Where they come in and get a special event permit, again, making sure we have all the right information as far as business tax receipt? If, if we so want, if we want to add that to the, to the mix. But making sure they have their licensing and their insurance and that it's in a safe place with the proper ingress egress and that public safety is aware that it's operating. So it'd be more of a kind of that special event process. The thing that I've been looking at and trying to, to make sure, whatever we do, I want to make sure it's something that we can efficiently administrate, efficiently manage, that we can, we're not, you know, setting up some bureaucratic process, but we can make sure that we are getting all the proper information on what's going on, but not making it a real cumbersome process and, and not something that's going to be difficult for staff to manage. We need to have a process that we can, we can be following up on these things without a lot of, a huge amount of process to it or paperwork. So that's, that's really the, the presentation in a nutshell. And what I'm, what I'm looking at or what I'm looking for from, from the commission is, you know, A, first thing, you know, are food trucks something that you are interested in? And then B, do you want some regulation or no regulation? And we can keep things the way they are or we can put some, some regulation to this based off of the state statute and possibly a special event. Matt's put together some, some applications already that we could use that would make it a very easy process for a vendor to want to, to come into town, provide us with a, basically it's a checklist of providing us all the information that's, that's needed as far as their state licensing, just, just making sure that they're providing us what they already have to get. The only other wrinkle to it is do we require them as, you know, providing business within the town? Do we, do we require them to have a BTR as, as, as doing business in the town, which is just something we do for all the other businesses in town? So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, mayor, and we can just, you know, have some open discussion with the commission on, on. And again, this will be a process. We'll come back down the road based off of the discussion tonight and bring you back, whether it's an ordinance or a special event policy to, for you to, to review and look at.
Okay. I cannot multitask, it's true. Thoughts at the table? You know, you know, I have mine, but, and Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you mind coming around so that we can see you if we need to talk to you just for this subject? You can move back.
We can stand up actually.
You got a chair all nice and warmed up for him?
I'll start off. The only comment I have is on our business tax receipt. I don't know, the way that we handle it with like our landscape and stuff is the city or town that they work out of, they have to get a business tax receipt, but, and then they have to have one for the county to go into all the other cities. So if they're not like from Oakland, I don't know if we would want to make them get a business tax receipt for Oakland for, for the ones coming in. If they already have one from their originating, wherever they're at.
So we do that with other businesses if they want to do business, even if they're not headquartered in Oakland. If they want to do business in the town of Oakland, say pest control management or something, let's just use that example. They have to get a BTR in the town of Oakland.
So to be honest with you, I'm not real happy with that because they should have one from the originated, in my opinion, originating and one from the county that says they can go around the county and that should be able to suffice it. Because if you had to get one for every town that you went into, whether it's $50 or $75, that's a pretty expensive venture for people. And it's a deterrent for them to want to come into a city if they already have one from their county.
But usually they can't get one with the county unless they have one with the town or the city?
They have, they can get one with the county and, but they have to get their originating where they're, like my business, for example, because it's over the coast, it originates out of Indian Harbor Beach, Florida. I have to have legally in that county to work. One from Indian Harbor Beach and one from Bavard County. And that lets me go anywhere in Bavard County I want to go, you know, and do my work because I'm registered with the county and I'm registered, you know, with the city that my business originates out of.
Just to use the city next door, if someone has one in the city of Winter Garden, then?
If they have an Orange County one also, and which they should have. If you got one from the city, you have, right, so.
They can go to Akoi, Windermere.
Right. I actually wasn't aware that's what we were requiring people to do that did not actually reside their business here.
Regardless if they had one in the county?
That's how our ordinance is written.
See, to me, that's just more of a money grab, you know?
But our, I mean, our fees, to be fair, are, are pretty low, are pretty minimal.
Is that another, is that a subject we would have to address?
Separately.
We can look at that.
Yeah, I guess that would end up being separate then.
So another good example, let me just use another example, a hairdresser. So if a hairdresser works out of Claremont and they work out of Akoi and they work out of Winter Garden, if they want to do business here in town, they still have to get that business tax license here in town.
If they're going to open a shop here in town.
If they're going to be part of a shop that's here in town.
Yes, but if they're just coming here to work and they're coming, if that works, if they're just doing a house call here to do it, then they should not have to.
That's, that's different, yeah. They're doing it.
That's what I'm talking about. And that's what a food truck would be. A food truck would not be one that would have a business here in town.
I agree. I don't, I don't think businesses normally get a business tax receipt in every municipality they work in, but only where their home base is.
Well, so.
A different conversation for us.
Yeah, what, we need to review the ordinance with you and see if the ordinance truly, that dictates business tax receipts is truly reflects what the commission wants. So that, that needs to be a separate discussion that we'll, we'll bring back later. The one thing that I saw with business tax receipt was the fact that we could use that as a way to check up on these businesses from, you know, because it's an annual thing that they could provide the state licensing and things and help us administratively make sure that, you know, these businesses have all the licensing that they need. It's, it's one way to, to follow up on things. But again, we, we can have that discussion on the business tax receipt at a separate time and review the, the current ordinance.
We continue to complicate things.
No, we need to have that, we need to have that discussion at, at a different point anyway, because I want to review like what we're charging and all that to make sure. We haven't looked at that for years, so.
As for food trucks?
Yeah.
As I would say, my opinion is we should not require them to do that. That's going to, you know, have us go down the road because we need to be consistent with everybody. But we do need, I agree, to come up with a way to get them into town, how to show the proper qualifications so that it's all safe and they're in the right place and all of that. So, which is just trip the town with, with their credentials.
But that's required by the state, correct?
Yeah, but I don't know if it's required by the state for them to come to each town.
No, but it's required that they are.
Right.
Right. In my trade, when I get, I get registered in different counties in the state, and one of the things they want to see is my license and they want to see our tax receipt that we have filed with our home base and the proof of insurance. So they're asking us to file the, you know, get another tax receipt then municipality. They just want to see my tax receipt from my home base.
And I will say with my, I have an Orange County tax receipt also because living, you know, back and forth between both ways. So that I would cover myself so that I would know they would have it and then you got to show approval. I would never have imagined I would have had to come into town and, and get a tax receipt for it. So it's, again, a whole different conversation. Let's talk about.
Well, you know, and, you know, my opinion is I just don't want to overcomplicate this.
Right.
I think that it's a lot of fun to have them here.
Oh, I'm for it.
And if the HOAs are okay, you know, I think that's where you might run into trouble. If the HRAs and, you know, those places are okay with it, then I'm okay with it. My biggest concern is that they be DPR licensed and safe and, you know, sanitation wise. But I love seeing that food truck up at, up at the Chevron.
Regardless, I think they're a very good idea and it's a very good business for people to do as long as they're following all the guidelines.
If it gets out of hand.
Right.
Hang on, when, when we're done at the table, then we'll take audience questions. Yeah.
That's my concern, the noise.
Yeah.
Cleanliness, even though it says 25 feet, sometimes it could be, I mean, they can reach down the trail.
Right.
And, and then the parking access, circulation, the pedestrians, I mean, is that going to require more safety? There's nothing here about safety, but are police officers having, sometimes it could, 12 o'clock at midnight on a Friday night or Saturday night? Who's going to be regulating that?
Matt?
The only concern for the police side, if you keep it unregulated.
Right.
You're going to have people coming in town, having the food trucks, which is good. I understand we want that. We don't know if their state license has been revoked. We don't know if they're providing proper garbage disposal for what they're doing. Some of these food trucks have grease traps and other things. Where are they dumping it? We don't know. The purpose of the application process is to make sure they follow the rules. And what Commissioner came up with referring to is they set up food trucks, what if they start to block streets? I got to move them. So an application process might be in the benefit of the town. So at least we can keep some control over it. Whether you guys want to charge them for it or not is completely up to you. But I'm thinking just from, from our standpoint, you might want to consider some kind of regulation, rule following that they have to do if they're going to operate in town.
Even if we don't charge them, just to have the file, who the people are, walk them through what we expect from them?
That's the problem.
And that would be entirely up to what you, you know, what you would want, want to decide. That's just my two cents on that and I'm going to go sit back in the corner.
Thank you. Because I was going to ask Matt.
Yeah.
Claremont, so what, what are the challenges you saw over there?
I know there's a lot of flex over there operating.
So Claremont had a very different way of regulating food trucks. They were simply asked to leave. Some, the city attorney's interpretation of it, they were not allowed to be there unless they were part of a special event. That interpretation of law is different now with this new statute. So what they're doing now, they're having to embrace some challenges and make corrections on it. Here, what we've thought about is a simple intake process. They fill out an application. I may be their first point of contact. We'll check their DBPR licenses out and any other applicable ones that they may have from the state. There are different types that we would need to look for. Another big thing is their fire inspections. So Orange County Fire Marshals, they, actually the fire department, Orange County Fire Department does inspections on food truck to make sure that they do have the proper firefighting equipment and some other things like that. That's additional. That is something we'll be looking at as well. Something as simple as a vehicle registration, making sure that food truck's license plate's valid. Very simple things that we'll be checking. And we can also check out their DBPR status online. There's a few, there's a few sites, state sites that we can do and just make sure they're above board. At any time that they have their DBPR license revoked or there's some sort of issue, they can simply be asked not to return to Oakland. It's, it's a simple process and we don't, like the town manager said, we don't want to create a, you know, a monster of paperwork. But as they come in, they will be put into a folder of, you know, probably in our town's share drive. We will keep track of those here. If they don't come in and we, we find out about them, probably go out, talk to them, have them, you know, fill out the application and get them pointed in the right direction as far as having them be within the ordinance of the town. The insurance is another big issue, making sure that they all, if something happens, even if they're on private property, it's still, you want to make sure that they're doing the right thing by our citizens and residents that come into town, whether they live here or just, they're just coming through for the food. Food trucks do have a following, very popular on social media, people travel from all over. So you will see an influx of folks coming through. But we can put things in place that are very simple and user friendly and we will make sure that they do meet all the checklist that we need them to meet and that they're safe to operate within the town.
And so if some food, like the food truck, I guess it was at, up at the Chevron twice this week. Once they come in and make their, they don't have to come in twice a week and reapply.
Essentially, it would be, I believe we were talking about once a year.
Okay.
Just making sure that, and that's another thing that the town clerk was going to mention, the BTR would help us keep track of that. As that year comes up, we're able to verify all their documentation to include insurance, their fire inspections, which I think are done on a six month basis just due to the fact that, that their equipment. So there are some things that we can fine tune to make it user friendly for them and for the town without having to type up some of the staff's time and resources.
Yep, and I, and I am, you know, whatever the hour, whatever you come up with with for hours, you know, you don't want them there late into the night.
Even special, yes, ma'am, even special events like Claremont, they do their downtown on Montrose Street. They do have time restrictions that they can, that they have to follow. They have to be packed up and cleaned. And they have the cooperation of the city, but it's, the onus is on the property, the managers, the food truck providers of it to make sure that their, their sites are clean. Because if they're not, or they, there's some, some sort of transgression, they don't come back. And the city does keep track of those things.
And I don't want to get, I don't want to be like other municipalities where they won't allow the generators or things like that.
That's why the time is ideal.
Yeah, the time is.
Right.
I want to clock in the morning.
So, so let me bring up a little nuance here that I brought up earlier. So you, you've got the idea that we, we've got, like at the Chevron, you've got a food truck out there, it's in the commercial corridor. So do we want to put an ordinance in place that essentially says that they can operate based on turning in a registration or an application, they could operate in the commercial and/or industrial areas? And should they want to be in, in a residential area, we treat that as an exception. They turn in an application, goes through staff and then gets approved as a special event or a special exception as a, a one-off kind of a, an event. So if Winter's Landing or Longleaf wants to do a Friday night food truck, they can, they can have that ability to do it even if they're not in a commercial area. But do we want to, and that, if it's in the commercial or industrial, it also takes care of the noise and, and some of those kind of issues because you know they'll be in commercial and industrial areas. So is that something you want to look at as far as, as the zoning and, and putting it on, on specific areas? So that it's a very easy process if you're going to be in commercial and there's an extra step to it if you want to do it in the residential area?
Do you have the food truck operator or the HOA?
I would say the HOA, if they're going to, if they're going to hold the event, then they get the information from the food truck operator and make the application.
I, I think that works, yeah.
So both of those scenarios, those, those are the notes I put down as far as location and, and also as relates to those HOAs. The other piece is I want us to also think about the future because right now there's nothing on 50. And so when commercial comes in, you know, how does that look? When restaurants and different businesses come in, you know, how does that, you know, you know, how do we kind of regulate that too as well?
It could be, you know, step by step.
Right. I want to make sure when we do make these decisions, we think about the future as well.
Sure.
Like now, there's nothing out there on 50, so there's no competition and there's no, no restaurant feeling, you know? Because I know, I think Winter Garden at one time, you couldn't have them downtown because that was, you know, that's their restaurant.
Well, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so, you know, I want to make sure that we're thinking about that as.
And you have them out on 50.
Right, right.
It's an event and one of the farmers, Saturday, which is a farmer's market that's there. And I'm thinking more of the, are restaurants in the future, you're right, Commissioner? The sit down, do we allow them, is this going to be takeout or are they going to be allowed to put 15 chairs and 10 tables out there and sit down and eat? How's that work for trucks?
Right, so that's, that's.
That's, that's something that we would have to explore as well. The first step was simply getting our hands around the situation.
Right.
And welcoming them into the town, but putting those parameters on, establishing the framework and then kind of fine tuning it.
And thinking about the nuances that we're all bringing up.
Well, and, and there are certain things. So if, if right now, if we start out with the commercial and industrial areas, as, as we get some development and you get some restaurants out there, we can, we can talk about how we want to carve out maybe this particular district. You know, we, we, we're going to have to go through and be a little creative and work with the, the town attorney. But maybe we end up setting up some specific districts where you can't have food trucks. But overall, we've got to have some, some way to allow food trucks based off the statute. So, but there may be ways that we can then tweak this as we move forward, as we get some more development so that we're not causing undue competition around the restaurants that are there. So I, I think that it's workable, but I just think we're going to have to start out with, with a way and then tweak it as things move forward based off of the kind of development. with, with a way and then tweak it as things move forward, based off of the kind of development that we get.
And this is good conversation, and I know what we have, we're running, we're running close on time, but I know that we have some people in the audience who want to speak to this, so I want to give them time to talk, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Can you stand up and tell us who you are?
Hi, Gina. I'm from the marketplace down the park, and we have a lot of food trucks that come there Saturdays, and we're growing, learning a lot about how this business works. One of the questions I had is specifically for Oakland, what if a food truck wanted to come in and they were not, some commercial, and it wasn't an HOA? Would there be allowance also for that?
But just come and just decide they want to just, I think I'll park here.
Basically having a party in their home and they want to bring a food truck in? Or say somebody's coming?
I think that's the kind of conversation we're having right now.
So, but it wasn't mentioned, so you say HOAs, but also private.
So.
That could come under that special event category, where they come in and take that extra step. That way, we've got it on the record, and, and there's an approval process for that.
So the extra step, whether it's a HOA or a personal home, you'd have to take that extra.
Somebody has to take charge of them.
Other question was, if there were permits and fees, would they be per event, monthly or yearly? And that's, would there be, would there be options for any of those?
Good, good question.
Consider that there might be options for a special event, a long time thing, or anything like that.
Good question.
The answer is hmm.
It's, that's, that's why we pay people to think about these things. They're gonna come back and tell us, but it's a great question.
Also, I wanted to say that customary for the host who actually brings a food truck in, customary for them is to have the food truck show their liability insurance, and ultimately, that's the bottom line for the biggest cost. So if there was like an application process, it's the liability insurance that I find is, is, is the one that you need to have, all the other permitting documentation could fall into that. But definitely, if there's food trucks on Oakland's property, Oakland's streets, liability insurance has to, you know, ultimately not fall on Oakland, so that's, that's the big one there.
Well, that's like with anybody, I mean, if you hire someone to do work on your house, that's, that's always my first question, is you want to be licensed and insured.
Also have a question, if there was gonna be some commercial properties in town that had decided to do food trucks on a regular basis, would it be something that you would regulate as far as what kind of power source they would have? Would there be ability to put in power sources for some food trucks to plug in? Or, or would it all have to be generator? Would it matter?
We don't have a designated area.
Yeah, we don't.
Those utilities, you'd have to bring your generator for now.
We're not, we're not like the other municipalities where they put in electric, and then they prohibited generators.
So if, if a business wanted to bring in food trucks, do they just have the food trucks plug into their place, or would that need to be regulated also?
I don't know that we have a place for them to.
That's the question, is it probably not a place for them to plug into, they would probably have to.
So, so I, I guess the example would be if, if the Chevron station had some outside plugs and brought a food truck in and let them plug in, would we have an issue with that?
I'll be a fire.
It would, it would, we would need to check with the fire department and just ensure that there's no issues with it. That's something we could definitely do a little bit more research in, that's, that's one of the more unknown parts, is figuring out exactly where the fire code does fall into play. Like we said, we want to check to make sure that the truck has everything that they need, and then their power source. Other jurisdictions have amperage, you know, they want to make sure that the amperage isn't exceeding what the town can draw or provide. So that's something we just need to double check and make sure that that's gonna fit safely in the jurisdiction. I don't, I'd have to do a little bit more research and consult with Orange County on that one.
But most food trucks don't run on a 120, they run on a 220, just special plugs and such, so.
Well, what this has done, and you have several great questions, is tell us that there's a lot of homework to do on the thing.
We've got some work to do.
But the answer to Steve's question, I think, is, now maybe I'll speak for myself at this point, is yes, I like the idea of food trucks, and I like food trucks coming in, I like the idea of the small business doing something. We just need to figure out how complicated it really is and how easy we make that complication. That's my opinion.
So, yeah, that's the purpose of a workshop, is we don't make any decisions, we're just having conversations.
Yeah, I just wanted to add those points to.
You've added some really good ones, so.
Think about it, appreciate it, cause you have the experience.
Yeah, thanks for giving us a whole lot more work, we appreciate that.
Yes, Steve, thank you for the extra work.
Right.
Well, you know, that's how we learn how to do stuff, like when we get people that have the experience to come in and tell us, have you thought about this?
Also, one of the things that I learned is that food trucks are supposed to have the commissary agreement on hand, food truck with them, part of the documentation that they're ready to show at all times.
Perfect.
So their schedules for their commissary is supposed to be on there. They may have eight or 10 or 12 hours a month, and they may have 40 hours a month, and that shall be documented in their, in the documentation that's on them in the truck. So that's part of the regulations.
Cool, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Like a caterer.
Yeah, yeah, you are a caterer.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, we've, we've taken some, we've taken notes, and we'll, we'll come back and either have another discussion to fine tune this, or we'll bring, bring some, an ordinance back. But probably, we'll come back for another discussion to fine tune this, and then we'll bring in ordinance and, and policy after that, so.
Do we have any, oh, Joseph?
Right now, Chevron is giving them permission to, to set up there, that's who's giving them permission right now.
They give them permission.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Donna, I think you're the only other. Do you have anything? She's like, don't wonder me. Yeah, but we have a couple people online. Do we have anybody virtually that wants to speak? Thank you. Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna close the workshop at like 7:07. I'm, I'm gonna give us a couple minutes, and then we're gonna start the regular commission meeting.
Thank you.
Now, that's why I'll wait, I'll let the older people go first and let them go. Dennis is having a hard time getting a second shot.
Oh, really?
Did he go today?
PMD was supposed to go today, cause last week he was Friday. Yeah, I mean, he had on the, on, at the, yeah, the prayer breakfast this morning, he was on, but he hasn't gone yet.
Yeah, I usually call him on Wednesdays, but. Good. All right.
Okay.
Be ready.
Are we ready? Ready. Okay, I'm gonna open the regular town commission meeting to order, or bring it to order for January 26th. Please stand for the pledge and the end of the session.
Bless allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Father God, thank you once again for trusting us with your town. I ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment. You help us make decisions for the best of our citizens. Keep us safe, keep a hedge of protection around us, and may we honor you in everything we say this evening, in your name, amen.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a little call in again. Mr. McMullen. Mr. Pollan.
Here.
Mr. Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Mayor Stark. You have a quorum. All right, could we have any expert communication? Um, so Chief, I'm gonna let you take it from here, I believe we are swearing in an officer, and it's lovely to see the turnout from our police department.
Thanks very, very much. This particular officer we're swearing in today, this is, I can't express enough what an awesome catch this is for us. I can introduce, well, first, I want to introduce a friend of our new officer who, from Claremont Police Department. Who thought the swearing-in was 7 o'clock this morning, and she hit on time. We appreciate that.
And you've been here all day waiting, right?
Sean, come on up here, please. To introduce the, the mayor and the commission, this is Officer Sean Dozier.
Hello. Welcome, thank you.
Officer Dozier started his career with the New York Transit Police in 1994. This organization was absorbed by the New York Police Department in 1996. In 1997, Officer Dozier promoted the rank of detective, where he started on the NYPD Narcotics Division and spent eight years in the NYPD Vice Enforcement Division. In 2006, Detective Dozier was transferred to the NYPD Intelligence Bureau, where he spent 15 years working high-profile investigations and retired as a detective first grade, which is the highest rank attainable for NYPD investigators. I had to actually ask about this, cause I'm not that familiar with NYPD. There's three grades of detectives there, third grade, there's thou, in a department of 36,000 people, that's a population of like Winter Garden. There's several thousand third grade detectives, there's about maybe a thousand or so second grade detectives, and there's only a few dozen first grade detectives. Detective Dozier worked high-profile cases, so when I was preparing this bio, I asked him, could you give an example of what that is? And he says, no, 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 sir, I can't.
I'd have to kill you.
Which gives you an example of high-profile cases that he probably worked. After 26 years of honorable service, Detective Dozier retired in 2020, moving his family here to Florida. And did the crossover academy, starting in January of this year, Mr. Dozier's come to the Oakland Police Department and has reed to work as our part-time detective in the criminal investigations unit. Detective Dozier's experiences will be, will be an invaluable asset to Oakland PD, and we are glad to have him here protecting our. Again, I said I cannot express how much we are glad to have someone of his experience and caliber coming to Oakland. Got the.
You have a quorum?
I do. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Sean Dozier.
I, Sean Dozier.
So I swear that I will support and protect.
So I swear that I will support and protect.
And defend the Constitution and government of the United States.
And defend the Constitution and the government of the United States.
The laws of the state of Florida.
The laws of the state of Florida.
And the charter and ordinances of the town of Oakland.
Charter and ordinances of the town of Oakland.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Perform all the duties of police officer for the town of Oakland.
Perform all the duties of police officer for the town of Oakland.
Of which I'm about to enter.
Of which I'm about to enter.
Welcome.
Do we want a picture with the commission?
Yeah, we're gonna pin his badge on.
Well, that's, yeah, that's important.
I just say one thing.
Sure. Oh, did you warn him?
I am, no, I'm very appreciative of being here at the town of Oakland. I hope to serve really the community the best in my ability. And I also want to thank all the officers that I work with for coming on my squad, and I truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. In the short time he's been with us, he has made an impact, and this is most of my day crew. You have somebody you want to pin this on for you?
Assad.
Come on up, sir.
This is my son, Sean.
Hi, John.
Sean Jr.?
Yes, sir.
Now, this is kind of hard to do, I don't know if your dad ever trained on this, but give it to Sean.
Go for it.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on.
My name's Gallo.
We call it paramedic, you know? Ooh.
It's like a course, huh? Oh, good job, buddy.
Take him.
Thank you very, very much, and if you don't mind, we want to get some pictures of Sean.
Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard, thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner.
I want to make sure I don't look familiar enough.
I don't want to tell you anything.
I can't be in this picture.
Just a little bit to the right here, a little bit more. Okay, ready? One, two, three. A few more. Got it, very good, thank you.
You know, who did I ask if you disappear, Mike?
Oh, we run at 5:30. Have a good night, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Got one lone, I mean.
All right, um, we have public forum. Do we have anybody virtually who wishes to speak on public forum? All right, consent agenda. Any questions, any comments?
I just got, this is a minor thing, but just one misspelling of a word on page eight, under the regular commission meeting. On page eight, under the ordinance 2021-02, at second paragraph, second sentence, the planning and zoning director, Marty, said that yes, we can put wording in there to make sure replacements or complaint should be compliant.
Oh, thank you. Good catch.
Thank you.
They wouldn't have caught it. Something in there and it turned it into complaint. Yeah.
I don't want to be misquoted, thank you.
All right, so if that is the only correction, I would like a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to accept consent agenda with Commissioner Pollan, sir.
Oh, sir, man.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
All right.
I don't know what that was.
I think that was my phone. I turned it off, so.
Other policy matters, Metro Plan, Orlando Municipal Advisory Committee. I'm always happy to get my letter from Virginia. So, Steve, you want to take this? You better unmute yourself first, bud.
Okay, we, we get this letter every year. Commissioner McMullen is our representative, has been for the last couple of years. This is a very, in my mind, it's a very important position, and Commissioner McMullen has definitely been very active for, for the town on this committee. So it really is just up to the commission and Commissioner McMullen, if he wants to continue to serve, or if there's somebody else that would like to, to serve on this. Like I said, in my mind, it's a very important committee and very important representation for the town. So I'll, I'll turn it back over to y'all for, for discussion as to, as to what y'all want to do.
Well, I, I have only one thing to add to that, was they do put down attendance on the letter, and Joseph had present at every meeting.
I think I might have missed one.
No, I did. I included it in the packet, I'm pretty sure she's right. No, I, I definitely always looked at that for any.
That's lots of money in the, in the municipal metro area. Um, I wouldn't mind if there was, you know, if somebody wanted to be an alternate. I mean, that's my opinion.
I know Sal has come.
Yeah, I have, I've gone a couple of years ago, so.
That's, I was gonna ask if you so desired to have Sal take your place. If you wanted, it's yours for a moment if you want it.
Oh, I don't have to have it, trust me. I mean, that's one less meeting I have to go to right now. So if Sal wants to join and replace me, I mean, that'd be great. I have no problem with that.
Have we, okay, well, I guess we were gonna vote on this so you guys couldn't discuss it in advance. Um, I'm fine with that either way. I think that's great. I know that, um, you know, I was gonna say this at the end of the meeting, but Joseph is now the president of the Tri-County League of Engineers and we're very proud of that accomplishment. And, um, and you've gotten a lot of great, um, press out of that, which I'm really...
I thank you all.
She went back to manage, manage it on her desktop.
Um, so this is a chance for us to kind of spread out the work and Sal, I think that would be great. I don't know about...
Honored if you guys decide. I've thought about it a couple of times. I think it's...
Yeah, trust me, yes. I think, you know, it's a good experience, good, you know, connection with different, you know, people around the county, so yeah. And I, I could, I don't mind being the alternative if you can.
Yes.
So I have no problem with that. I know I took over for SKE, I mean, um, for my...
You know, and I love me some Virginia. She's, she's great. So, um...
Yes, we used to go around the table with her.
Yes, I have no, trust me, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
I think we're gonna probably need a motion, correct?
We need a motion, yes.
Motion and...
I'll make the motion that we, um, appoint Commissioner Sal Ramos to the, um, to the municipal advisory committee, the MAC committee, to represent the town of Oakland.
With Joseph as an alternate. Can we amend the motion? Amend the motion? I didn't think you said it, did you say it?
Yeah, I see that. I didn't know if I could...
Yes.
Self as the alternate.
As long as Nancy says it, it's fine.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay, moved, moved, seconded. Do we have any questions or comments? Um, I have, I have another comment because you know how I love to editorialize every now and again, is people think that we just show up, you know, two Tuesdays a month for an hour, hour and a half, we see how fast we can get these meetings done.
Yeah.
Um, and that is simply not the case.
No.
And everybody on this board works at another, at another, um, job, commission chair, committee job of some kind. So, um, I appreciate all the hard work everybody does. So, anyway.
Cool.
Um, all in favor?
All right.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And that does make it, I know it makes it rather awkward because, you know, you guys, we can't talk in advance...
Yeah.
About it. So, anyway, I appreciate it.
Way, way in, I thought.
We will, we will let them know in the morning, uh, what the, the decision is.
Oh, that's awesome, yes.
We'll, we'll take care of that.
And kudos, kudos to Sal for his new role and kudos to Joseph for being president now of Tri-County League.
And Joseph, is there anything you have to keep me up to speed, you know, with anything pending or anything that you wanna share with me?
Okay, okay. I know right now, I know they're doing virtual meetings, so, um, they still can say, continue with that. Very cool.
Public hearings. First public hearing ordinance 2021-03. An ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, accepting a dedication of right-of-way continuing Broad Street to the Lake County boundary, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date.
Hello, good evening. Okay, we have a request from Eagles Landing Adicoi, uh, who is the developer group for the Eagles Landing Lake Park Sound, to dedicate a right-of-way, um, accessing the Lake County side of the project. This is ahead of their recording of their final plat, which is still a month, two months, maybe even a little bit further off than that. They're, they're still working out some things. Um, therefore, they've made the request to, um, dedicate the right-of-way early. Um, go ahead and flip through. General location, inform where it's located. Um, just, sorry, up in that area and they have the main property and a small little lot that comes out and matches up to Broad Street. So basically, we'll continue Broad Street through the property to the Lake County line where the subdivision and the entrance over there begin. Um, there is one thing, or actually two provisions within the developer's agreement that I have a little bit of concern about because dedication of this right-of-way enables the Lake County side to go move forward, which they are actually already, I believe, ready to go to commission for the Lake County Board of County Commissioners to approve the, um, the final plat. Um, so this kind of offsets the timing a little bit, but there were two provisions within the developer's agreement, which we have kind of reworded, um, to ensure some of the transportation in lieu of impact fees get paid in a timely fashion. Because as soon as this right-of-way is done, the plat is recorded on the Lake County side, they're probably going to begin building. So we need to make sure that we're getting those fees coming in. Uh, the word, original wording made it a little bit difficult to deal with simply because it required an agreement between the town and Lake County to basically collect fees at their issuance of a building permit. I've talked with county attorneys, I've talked with the building department, I've talked with the management director at the time, and we don't really have a way to do that. So we've kind of come up with a little bit of rewording of the language. That slide wound up way too small. So, uh, the primary thing is gonna be section four, which is the big middle paragraph. Of course, you hopefully should have this in your backup, but essentially, I'm gonna boil it down versus the wording for wording, um, that we collect, uh, the hundred and two thousand dollars for one thousand dollars a lot for each of the lots on the Lake County side. We will do that at the approval, i.e. signing of the ordinance for this right-of-way dedication. The remainder, which would have ended second two thou- or second thousand dollars, was in the original developer's agreement to be paid at the time of building permit for each permit on the Lake County side. Again, coordination, trying to get that collected and not gonna work, the developers have agreed to pay the thousand dollars per lot at the time that they record the, our side, our nineteen to twenty lots on our side of the line. So for the, within the town of Oakland. So basically, we're gonna get two lump payments, one at the approval of the right-of-way dedication and the second one at the recording or at the, yeah, recording of the final plat for the town of Oakland side. The only other thing that we had discussed was, or added in was under section five, which there are some requirements for right-of-way improvement or not improvements. Um, well, I guess you could call them improvements. I, this is basically fixing surfaces and making sure that things are right from Broad Street and High Street back out to JW Dozier's. Um, and the other was, uh, inclusion of sidewalks, which they will prepare a performance bond, basically to say, hey, at such time, or if we don't do these improvements, you've got the bond on hand to be able to do them. Um, kind of the same way that you would post a performance bond for a subdivision. Just in case the improvements don't get done, there's a pool of money that can get those done. Um, staff is recommending that the town commission consider approval of ordinance 2021-03. And that concludes what I have to say.
Um, do we have any...
A little bit wordier than I wanted to get, but...
Do we have any questions at the table?
Yes.
Sal?
Um, the twenty lots on our side, what's the impact fee amount?
Three...
Uh, seventeen ninety something, I think.
I don't recall the number. It's just shy of the two thousand.
Okay. And then that bond or that performance bond, will that amount cover?
That's not covering the transportation impact fees. That's just covering the development agreement provision that said that the developer would be on the line for basically resurfacing or any correction to improvements that need to be made to...
Because the developer deals with that.
That bond might be...
The bond will cover to the...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's a, it's a guarantee to cover the improvements that need to be done. So if they don't, if they don't do the improvements, we have a pool of money to make sure they get done.
So that pool of money, does that pool of money have a limit? Or will it just cover it no matter what the expense of whatever?
It, it has a limit. We'll review the, the amount on the bond to make sure we think it's reasonable, um, from the town side. That's, that's something that Mike Parker has quite a bit of experience with, is these performance bonds.
Okay. All right. Sure.
Any other questions? No questions? Okay, um, I am going to look for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-03.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I am going to open this to the public. If we have any questions or comments? Have any, um, questions or comments or... Um, I'm gonna bring it back to the table. All in favor?
All right.
Second public reading ordinance number 2021-01. An ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, to consider an application for a special exception used to establish an accessory dwelling unit at property located at 304 North Tuck Street, provided for findings and conditions, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date.
Um, you heard the first reading back on January 12th. We didn't really put together another presentation for you, but, uh, if you have any additional questions or anything you'd like us to clarify, or I am, anyway. Jay's online, so...
I, um, I would, um, take it to the table to see if anybody has any further questions. I think I understand it.
Fine.
Since this is a second reading.
Just don't understand why mom has to be in such a little...
Oh, they decided to flip it. She's now got, and she can't go, and she can't go up the stairs. She gotta wait till people come over to her side.
We are, okay, we do have it all.
She gets it, she's gonna have to...
Well, I mean, she did there.
She's earned that right, trust me. All right. Um, so do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, okay.
I'll make the motion to accept ordinance number 2021-01.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I'm gonna open this up to the public. Do we have any comments here in the building?
I want to thank you all very much. And I do wanna thank Jay and Steve and everybody else that worked on this. It was a very difficult process, but we're finally here. So that's good.
Good. We have anybody virtually? Okay, bring it back to the table. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, second public hearing ordinance 2021-02. An ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, amending the zoning code, land development code, to add dark sky lighting requirements and providing for codification, conflict, severability, and an effective date.
Right. Okay, so, um, Mayor, Commissioners, uh, last, uh, two weeks ago, Commissioner Pollan wanted to, uh, want us to add a section and y'all agreed that we would have like a retrofit section. We did, and I'm, I'm, it's right at the very end, it says lawfully existing external lighting may continue to be utilized, but retrofitting or otherwise changing or updating lawfully existing external lighting, including but not limited to, to streetlights, shall comply with dark sky lighting requirements. So I think that satisfies your concern. I see you nodding yes, and, uh, that's really all I wanted to say.
Is that what you were looking for?
Exactly. Thank you.
And, um, just to be clear, these lights do not give off 5G. Just to be clear.
Oh, gosh.
So, um, they are just lights.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you for your attention to that detail. I will entertain a motion if we don't have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-02.
Second McMullin.
All right, we're moved and seconded. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just have one question on that last part. So if a light becomes non-reparable, then it has to be replaced with a dark sky light, correct? But as long as it breaks it, it can be repaired. That's okay?
I would say if it's un-reparable and has to be replaced, I would, it would have to be dark sky compliant.
That's the way we look at it.
If it's repairable, it can be repaired for what it is now.
Correct. Yes, I would say so.
I'd say so.
Yes.
Yeah, if it's just like a burned-out bulb or something like that.
I don't necessarily mean like, I, I get a bulb and just be replaced, but sometimes a light...
Picture itself. If the picture itself breaks and you can repair it.
It has a loss.
Yeah.
So I don't really think that was kind of discussed or talked about, so I would just walk your...
Well, I, I don't know that we would want to, you know, if it was a twenty-dollar fix versus a whole new light, we would want to do that.
That was where I'm concerned.
Well, that's good clarity. Um, anybody virtually have any questions or comments? I did get a motion, didn't I? Did I? Okay.
Second.
Any questions or comments virtually? Okay. Um, bring it back to the table, all in favor?
All right.
All right. So now we are down to manager reports. Parker, you're in the room.
I'm in this world.
Do you have any, well, govern yourself accordingly.
So since we last met, there's been a lot of stuff happening. Um, court courts down at Spear Park, if you all have had a chance to take a look at those. Um, those will be complete in a couple of weeks. Looks really good. Um, one is a, um, pickleball court and then we're replacing the tennis court.
That was a lot of concrete that came out.
Uh-huh. It was about thirty yards.
Is concrete recyclable in any way?
And then we recycled it.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll give you the address after the meeting if you want it.
I don't want it. No.
Um, also, we've managed to close both sides of Cross Street, if you hadn't noticed.
No, I haven't noticed that. Sal and I have not noticed that at all.
Yeah, so that'll be finished, uh, most likely next week, but as soon, as soon as we can, we'll get that opened up.
I don't think it's causing any.
It's no problem. There's plenty of detours. Oh, and, uh, today I got notified by the, uh, Turnpike, and I think Steve may have gotten that same email, uh, they are going to let the, uh, construction project, the first part of March. So it's coming up quick. Just a reminder, you know, that's the Turnpike project, that's...
Oh, the Turnpike.
Close to the bridge.
Yes.
Okay, so the only thing that I would say, and I've said this before, in March, is a good communication plan on this.
Yes.
Absolutely. And the first thing that's gonna happen when they let this project, at the same time, they're gonna hire a public information, uh, so as soon as we get that information, we'll be in contact and, uh, make sure we have a good, uh, source of information. So that, they, they're gonna be hand in hand. They're public, PIO consultant at the same time they're putting this out to bid. So th- this is just, uh, preliminary stuff, probably in the next four to six months is when, you know, there's a lot of administrative time built into this, just in the conversation I had about...
We saw the time on, I mean...
But, uh, it, it's my intention to invite them out, uh, early in the summer to come out and talk to the commission.
Just a reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. So my, uh, coffee with the manager, uh, had about sixteen people at the last one, uh, good discussion. I was, uh, very happy with the, with the turnout there. Um, as Mike talked about with Cross Street, and I just wanna give kudos to the public work staff. They've been doing a lot of work since we were kind of in between the rainy time, doing a lot of work on swales and, uh, stormwater and this Cross Street, uh, is, is part of that, all of that, that they'll be doing some, some swell work and stuff as part of this. So my coffee with the manager had about sixteen people at the last one. Good discussion. I was very happy with the turnout there. As Mike talked about with Cross Street, and I just want to give kudos to the public work staff. They've been doing a lot of work since we were kind of in between the rainy time, doing a lot of work on swales and stormwater, and this Cross Street is part of that, all of that. They'll be doing some swell work and stuff as part of this. So, you know, a lot of stuff that needed to be done, and they're doing a great job out there. So I just want to commend the public work staff, Scott and his crew out there.
I'm telling you what, I, you know, I walk, you know, very often in the morning, and those guys are at it. When, you know, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, we talked about maintenance in the past, and I definitely think, you know, they are doing a great job, so.
And Parker's busy out there doing his public relations work.
Absolutely, absolutely. Roundabout and Turnpike, I was going to bring that up also. So we've got the Roundabout project next fall. That'll be let in June, probably notice to proceed in January of next year. So back that up by about four months with the Turnpike. They're letting theirs in March. So you're probably looking to notice to proceed on work. I would say probably September, October. Again, you know, there's some admin time built into these projects. We will certainly have a public information campaign that we'll be working on to get this out. And I talk about it literally at every meeting that I can and with everybody that I can. And there's a presentation on our website that I gave you all a few months ago that can give you, give people more information if they want to know what the project's about. All they got to do is type in Turnpike into the search bar, and it'll pop up the presentation. Couple other things, Hull Island, M I Homes, you know, there's a second phase to that project, the old Rossman Pinto property. They are starting the preliminary work, will be having some kind of a pre-con meeting, I think, with them fairly soon. But they will start the, working on the other side on the phase two part of the project. So there will be some movement of some dirt and some things happening. I'll keep in touch with the commission, and we're going to make sure we let the residents know what's going on. So that's coming probably in the next thirty, sixty days that they're going to start work on phase two, and that's another forty-five lots. Sales over on phase one have picked up significantly. If you've been out there lately on the peninsula, there's a lot going on out there right now. So that's coming. And then turn lanes on Oakland Avenue, I'm not sure what the timeline is on that, but the turn lanes for the apartment complex will be coming in the next couple of months. I just want to make sure residents know about that. We'll certainly have some information that we'll be putting out when it comes down to it, but there will be some, you know, maintenance of traffic that happens as they're adding that turn lane on Oakland Avenue. And then last thing is I've got a solid waste meeting scheduled for three o'clock on Friday. I've got five members, and we're going to start that process on Friday.
That's very exciting. I'm serious, I'm not kidding.
So that's.
We know, that's the thing.
So that's all I have. Thank y'all for, you know, I'd much rather be there in person, and we'll see y'all soon.
Yeah, we hope that all is well.
Yeah, things are well, things are good.
Thank you, Steve.
Sal, do we have anything else from staff? No? Okay. Sal?
I will be having a VIP walkthrough on the Oakland Arts and Heritage Museum with Fred Shepherd. And we're going to have one tomorrow morning at nine AM. And I don't know, Steve, if anybody else joined.
I'm coming.
You're joining?
Yeah, I love the, Betty Wade, yeah, just a little bit of an update, too. I know Commissioner Bryce Meyer-Satterfield brought Dennis through and Peggy Welch. Betty Wade was there on Monday, yesterday. Fred will be there tomorrow, and I believe Frank is coming on Thursday.
Did you hear from Marilyn Matt yet?
I have not heard from Marilyn.
All right, and I let Betsy know that, you know, Friday would be a, you know, what do we call it?
Soft opening.
Word of mouth. And she will be bringing her, she'll be coming and bringing her mother by at one if anybody wants to, you know, on Friday.
Word of mouth, eleven to three on Friday.
And Saturday, you still need us?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
That's a Saturday.
Saturday was fine.
Nine AM?
Spoke out of turn, sorry.
Oh, thank you for reminding me.
Nine AM?
Yes, nine AM.
One other thing also, Betty Wade and I are both going to be talking to Channel thirteen concerning the historic cemetery on Thursday. They're doing a little, a little story on the historic cemetery. They'll be, they'll be out there on site taking some pictures, and I'll be doing an interview remotely, and they'll be talking with Ms. Wade.
Very good. I think it's nice that, you know, some people get to just kind of be hosted through.
I tell you, Peggy Welch was very, very grateful, you know, for all the reasons. She really appreciated us reaching out to her, as did Dennis the same way.
Awesome.
What did you do, Peggy?
Took her through the.
What day?
Pardon me?
Day was it?
Uh, last Tuesday?
Yes.
Was it Tuesday?
Yes.
I saw you guys out there.
Yeah, we didn't have a meeting. It was last Tuesday. Yeah.
Very nice.
When we ask you specifics like that.
Yeah, really, I can't. Anything else? No? All right, Rick?
Just want to give an update on the Porridge Preserve, which is being held Saturday, February thirteenth, from five thirty to eight thirty. The, they increased the limit from a hundred people to a hundred and twenty-five people. And a hundred and twenty-one have already been sold, only four open seat openings right left now. And the Crooked Can is donating all the beer.
That's great.
That's great.
And Revel Tales, Winter Garden is providing tastings of their new beverages.
Awesome.
My understanding is Reverend, Revel Tales is.
Charlie Roper. Charlie Roper.
Yeah, part of Roper family.
What is, what is that? What kind of company is that?
It's, they got canned beverages.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly what kind.
Are they alcoholic?
Yes.
Yeah. Charlie Roper.
Well, okay, and so it's, it's probably got something to do with the Polars and.
Yeah, it's some kind of a mixed drink that's got the alcohol content that you can sell in cans. So I don't know what the flavors are or anything. It'll be a good chance to find out what it's about at the preserve.
I'll ask Charlie, I'll be seeing Charlie tomorrow, so I'll ask him about it.
Joseph?
Yeah, I'm impressed with the sales.
Good. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
And we will be bringing a memo back next meeting to authorize alcohol on that property. So just, just a heads up, because that needs, right now, it's not in the ordinance that way. So we need official commissioner approval.
Okay. I thought we did something, and it was a while ago.
It was for the meeting hall.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Rick? Mr. President?
Thank you again, everyone. Just a big heartfelt thank you for last week Thursday. Looking forward to the year, and I'll be leaning on everyone, because, you know, we really want to do all we can to interact with the state legislators. And I know the tri-county is putting together a database so we can, you know, list everyone who would like to partner up with our county representatives all throughout the area, you know, also our state legislature. I know we have a good relationship. We got some new people, so we're definitely, we're, you know, be leaning on the town and the commission and whatnot. So, but again, really, a big heartfelt thank you, you know, for being there and supporting me and allowing me to do the things that I'm doing. And so I thank you all.
We're very proud.
Yes.
And I did mention at the men's prayer breakfast this morning about the town, about the center, and so they know about the time, you know, at eleven to three. And it's similar to, I know, it's similar to the railroad, and I know that's, we're kind of matching the railroad found museum time. That's the only time they open on Fridays from eleven to three down in Winter Garden. It's the same, you know, same time. They only open on Fridays. The railroad museum, not the Winter Garden Heritage, but the.
Are they afraid we're stealing their thunder? Because for me, I would, I would think that, you know, that would make it even more enticing because it gives you more things to do. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't think they are. And I agree with you, because, you know, I've always talked in the art world, you know, in the museum world, everything's on the I four corridor. There's nothing out west other than what they have in Winter Garden along with their theater. And so we've always been, you know, you know, not even thought about to bring art and history and, you know, all that kind of stuff out west. And so that's something I always, you know, banged against the Orange County people for a long time. So, you know, you have options. Here we are.
Right. But I think, you know, it would be like, you know, let's make a day of it. We'll go to Winter Garden, and we'll go to both museums and.
Especially when we get the golf cart, cart, you know, so we can go. I know we're, that's being worked on, so.
I saw the cutisal, I think it was the old, and it looked like a little Mercedes golf cart.
Red one?
Yeah. I loved it, it was so cute.
Yeah, and I'm talking to the Robinsons, I'm going to try to get them a private tour, chucking.
Oh, that would be great. Anybody, do you guys think is appropriate, please?
Try to get them down there as well. So, yeah, but, and I let the men's prayer breakfast know that we're not doing a major announcement, we're just doing a word of mouth piece until.
We might have a few people on Friday.
I think we will. I think the word's going to get out and, and as people see it and.
Well, people are interested.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it really is a good opportunity. We have a really cool history.
And it looks gorgeous in there.
And finally, I think we'll eventually get away from that Oakland.
Right, exactly.
Oh, that went away a while ago.
I still run into people that say, wow.
No, I run into people who don't understand where the Oakland town limits are.
Right, I use that all the time.
There was something, there was a Florida Backroads thing on, post on Facebook, and it showed Oakland Manor, as you need to see Oakland. And I'm like, it's not in Oakland.
So that's it, Mary, that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Sal.
Oh, thank you.
Mike?
Just again, a reminder for Saturday for us.
Thank you. I didn't have that on my radar. I have it on my calendar, though, I'm sure at home.
I have my best friendship. That's all I had, Kathy.
I think I covered everything I had listed down here that is worth talking about. So very exciting that we have a new detective.
Doesn't have a lot of experience.
That just warmed my heart, the way he cuffed and kissed his son.
That was cool. Well, it wasn't anything other than he was getting closer to say, thank you for not sticking me.
Yeah, really. Putting a car massage on, it's just awful.
He wished for me, this is smart chip for that guy right there.
Well, Donna thought she had done something she didn't know about. But that all came in.
I told Chief, I said that, you know, you know, there is a day when all these people came in out of the back door.
Okay, well, if you don't have anything further, Joseph?
Okay, only one thing I want to tell staff, that legislative paper they sent out is real nice.
Yeah, that is easy.
Thank you.
We're going to be hopeful again this year.
Yeah, we are. If all hearts and minds are satisfied, let's adjourn, it is now eight oh four.
Thank you. I thought that was, but I heard you.